This conference will now be recorded.
You good? You ready? Yeah. I'll be at this. 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 Oh, we've been gone for like, we thought you were lost. Go to Vegas.
Ladies and gentlemen, I, the Honorable Mayor Andrew Dawson, hereby call to order this meeting of the Sedalia City Council on this eighteenth day of September, part of the 2023-2024 session. Let us proceed with purpose and dedication in the values that guide our great city. This meeting is now called to order. The first item on our agenda is the prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Chapel Mattson, you have the floor.
Would you join me, standing as able, in an invocation? Dear Lord and Father of all, we come to you this evening to ask your guidance as Sedalia City Council, mayor, administrator, staff, and members come to hear about and discuss important matters for the betterment of our community. We are grateful for their service to our city. We ask your protection of all of our first responders, police, sheriff, fire, ambulance, EMTs, hospital staff, all who work 24/7 to serve and protect us, often at their own peril. We are grateful for the United States of America, a constitutional republic, which so many thousands have fought and died to create and preserve for these 247 years. We ask your blessing and protection for all military and civilians serving our country today, here and throughout the world, protecting our American way of life, keeping us safe from threats from without, and sadly, from within. And now, as we leave this tonight, please protect us and our loved ones. Keep us from harm until we meet again. And all of this is prayed in the name of our risen Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Hallelujah. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the God before which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every heat and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Bogus.
Here.
Hiller.
Here.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Here.
Bliss.
Here.
Next item on our agenda is a public hearing regarding the annexation petition received by Jeff Redford. Administrator Shaw, would you lead us into this public hearing?
Sure. We had received a annexation petition. It's, I believe I got it, no, I got it a different deal. So, basically, this is at 16th Street and Water Tower Road. Mr. Redford, on behalf of his company name, has sent a petition to annex that property. According to the statutes, we have to have a public hearing with notice, no less than 14 days and no more than 60 days after receipt of a voluntary annexation petition. And then, after the hearing, we have to wait at least 14 more days before council can consider by order. So, this time is set aside for anybody from the audience, anybody from the public who wishes to speak for or against such annexation, as far as whether it's appropriate or not to end. We can't.
All right. With that, we will now open the public hearing. Anyone who has any comments to read into the record, please step to podium. You have three minutes. Please state your name and your address. Any takers? Going once, going twice? Okay. We'll now close the public hearing. Up next, we have a proclamation, and this is with regards to Good Neighbor Week. And I'd like to go ahead and read this proclamation into the record. Whereas the City of Sedalia, Missouri is committed to fostering strong communities, encouraging acts of kindness, and promoting a spirit of good neighborliness among its residents. And whereas on July 1st, Missouri Governor Mike Parsons signed HB 1738, designating Missouri Good Neighbor Week, commencing on the National Good Neighbor Day, September 28th, and continuing for six days, making Missouri the first state to celebrate neighbors for an entire week. And whereas the observance of the National Good Neighbor Day and Missouri Good Neighbor Week aims to raise awareness of the significance of good neighbors in achieving human understanding and building thriving communities. And whereas the University of Missouri Extension and the Hopeful Neighborhood Project have united efforts to energize the celebration of Missouri Good Neighbor Week with the goal of documenting acts of neighboring in Missouri during this period and recognizing exemplary neighbors across the state. Now, therefore, I, Andrew Dawson, Mayor of Sedalia, do hereby proclaim September 28th through October 4th as Good Neighbor Week in Sedalia, Missouri. I encourage all residents of Sedalia to actively participate in this celebration by engaging in acts of neighboring, demonstrating kindness, and fostering connections within the community. Let us embrace the spirit of good neighborliness by creating an environment of compassion, support, and unity. And so, part of this is, is anybody who wants to can go to the, it's the Missouri, the Extension University of Missouri, their website, and they can go ahead and nominate a neighbor that they find to be exemplary and engaged within their neighborhood to be the Neighbor of the Year. So, I've encouraged everybody to reach out to your neighbors, and I know you guys got some good ones, and make some nominations. With that, I won't go ahead and do that too hard. We will go ahead and move on to the Service Awards. And for that, I'm going to invite up Director Simmons to go ahead and present the Service Award that he has.
Well, tonight, we are going to celebrate 10 years of Jolene Stride being a community development assistant. What does that mean? I thought I'd quantify that just a moment for you all. That means she works with five boards plus she as the city council, coordinating 62 calendars for at least 60-plus regularly scheduled commission and board meetings throughout the year. Let's multiply that by 10, that's 600 meetings coordinated. That does not include special commissions, such as the comprehensive plan, which we did three times during her tenure, and the Main Streets efforts. So, we're looking at, we're probably looking at close to 1,000 meetings that she's coordinated over those 10 years. She takes those phone calls upstairs with construction questions, code enforcement questions, special event questions. In that permitting process, she's in charge of creating good relationships with our developers, our contractors, our builders, our engineers, our architects. So, this person, Jolene, has for 10 years been coordinating those efforts and giving the city a good name. Code enforcement, she takes those calls when our code enforcement officers are out in the field doing their job. She gets that call, wonder why they got that letter. And sometimes it's easygoing, and sometimes it isn't, but she takes it daily, and it's a big cross to bear. She keeps me organized. That's no easy task if any of you have been in my office. She knows where my files are, she knows what meetings coming up and where I've got to be, and keeps me in good stead. She also helps me with those deeds and titles and real estate transfers and tax sale purchases. And not only during the purchase, but nine months later, when a letter has to go out saying we're going to make good on our quick claim deed, or our collector's deed, and all of those letters that have to go out, certified mail. And I did another number for her today. I'm guessing she did 20,000-plus certified letters during this 10-year period. So, this administrative assistant is really one of those wheels in the city that keeps things moving. And I would like to thank Jolene for 10 years of service. There's 10 million more things I could say tonight, but we're going to stop there because I'll probably get all teary, because it's pretty cool. So, thank you, Jolene. Come on up and give your service.
I have personally heard some of those calls, and just want to personally thank Jolene for filling those. I appreciate that. And you were very long-suffering for what you dealt with. So, thank you. Let's see. Up next, we have the approval of the previous session minutes. This is for the council meeting dated September 5th, 2023. Do I have a motion in the second?
Please be approved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, council. Up next, I have the reports from the special boards and commissions and committees. This is the acceptance of the Citizens Traffic Advisory Commission minutes dated July 12th, 2023. Do I have a motion in the second?
Please be approved.
Any council discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, council. Now, we have the roll call of standing committees. First is Finance and Administration.
I have two items on my report tonight. First is the presentation of the fiscal year 2023 audit results presented by Williams Keepers.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Amanda Schultz. I'm an audit partner at Williams Keepers in Columbia. And joining me this evening is Mercedes Kendall. She's one of our audit seniors, and she was the in charge on the city's audit again this year. So, we recently completed our audit of the city's financial statements as of and for the fiscal year ended March 31st, 2023, and we are here this evening to present the results of our audit, and we'll do so by presenting our summary report. That's the first report in your blue-bound book that Kelvin passed out earlier, and it really just hits the highlights of the individual reports that we issued as a result of the audit. The first is the audited financial statements themselves. So, this contains the city's audited financial statements for the year ended March 31st, 2023, along with our report on those financial statements. We issued an unmodified or a clean opinion on the financial statements. In our opinion, they are presented fairly, in all material respects, in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. This is the best opinion that the city can get, and it means that the users of your financial statements can rely on them. Just a reminder that management is ultimately responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements. We did prepare them again this year. It is a common practice for us as independent auditors to do so, but they were reviewed and approved by management before they were issued. We did use our judgment determining how to audit the city again this year. We performed another risk assessment process where we took a look at balances, transactions, processes, and controls, and focused our attention on areas where the financial statements could be misstated. Just a reminder, that means we did not audit every balance or every transaction, but we did enough work in order to be able to give an opinion on the financial statement. The financial statements themselves include two different sets of financial statements again this year. The government-wide financial statements are on pages 11 and 12. Those are full accrual and include all of the city's funds, as well as any long-term balances. So, capital assets, long-term debt, and other liabilities, basically everything the city has to report, are included in those government-wide financial statements, again, on pages 11 and 12. There are also fund financial statements on pages 13 through 22. Those are separated into governmental, proprietary, and fiduciary fund statements, and those provide much more detail on the balances and underlying transactions of all the city's individual funds. At the top of page two of the summary report is a table that summarizes the highlights from those government-wide financial statements, again, that puts everything together for the city, as of and for the year ended March 31st, 2023, and 2022. And this is for the primary government only, so no component units are included here. There is a management's discussion and analysis on pages four through 10 in the audited financial statements that discusses the changes in the various categories that are presented here. If you look at the audited financial statements themselves, they are not comparative. Only one year, fiscal year 2023, is presented within them, but that management's discussion and analysis is comparative. It's written from city management's perspective, and it talks about the changes between the two years. I know I went over the audited financial statements at a very high level. I'm happy to field any questions now or later after Mercedes covers the rest of our summary reports. Are there any questions now?
Any questions, council?
Okay. Well, I will turn it over to Mercedes, who's going to cover our auditor's communication letter and our management letter that we also issued as a result of the audit. So, the first letter behind the audited financial statements is the auditor's communication letter. This letter includes comments about the audit process that we are required by our professional standards to communicate to the governing board of an audittee, and for the city, this council serves that role. Highlights of this letter are as follows. We noted no transactions that we considered both unusual and significant related to the application of accounting policies. GASB 87 leases and GASB 91 conduit debt obligations were implemented by the city during fiscal year 2023. The city had several leases that fell within the scope of GASB 87, both on the less store side and the less C side. As the less store, the city recognized a lease receivable asset, and as the less C, the city recognized a right-of-use asset and offsetting liability. And the implementation of GASB 91 conduit debt obligations did not result in any significant changes to the financial statement. GASB 96 subscription-based information technology arrangements will be effective for the city during fiscal year 2024, and GASB 101 compensated absences will be effective for the city during fiscal year 2025, and we will assist Jessica and Kelvin as needed over the next couple of years to get those implemented. We evaluated the estimates affecting the financial statements and found them reasonable in relation to the financial statements as a whole. The financial statement disclosures are neutral, consistent, and clear, and all required disclosures to support the financial statements are included. And we found the accounting records to be in good order, but we did propose several significant audit adjustments as a result of our testing procedures, primarily related to year-end accrual balances and GASB 34 activity. And lastly, we had no disagreements with management on accounting or auditing issues. We had no difficulties in performing our audit and felt we received full cooperation from the city staff. The final item in your book is the management letter. This letter is used to communicate any findings we have about the city's internal controls and certain other matters that are, in our opinion, significant enough to warrant your attention. This letter is used to communicate, oh, sorry, I just said that. The highlights are as follows. Although the scope of our engagement was not directed towards the opinion of the adequacy of internal control, we considered internal control as a basis for designing our audit procedures. A deficiency in internal control exists when the design or operation of a control does not allow management or employees, in the normal course of performing their assigned functions, to prevent or detect and correct misstatements on a timely basis. A material weakness is a deficiency or a combination of deficiencies in internal control such that there is a reasonable possibility that a material misstatement of the entity's financial statements will not be prevented or detected and corrected on a timely basis. A significant deficiency is a deficiency or combination of deficiencies in internal control that is less severe than a material weakness, yet important enough to merit attention by those charged with governance. We considered the following deficiency in the city's internal control to be a significant deficiency regarding the preparation of financial statements. So, we identified significant adjustments to the books and records used to prepare the financial statements, again, primarily related to those year-end accrual entries and GASB 34 activity. And we also prepared the financial statements, including the note disclosures as to be complete and free of significant error under accounting standards. And to clarify that comment, we're not recommending that the city begin preparing their own financial statements going forward. We're only recommending that the city makes all those year-end entries, or most of the year-end entries, before we start the audit. In addition, we became aware of matters that are opportunities for strengthening internal control and operating efficiency, but did not meet the definition of a significant deficiency or material weakness related to capital assets and debt covenants. So, although these recommendations do not meet the definition of material weakness or significant deficiency, we include them as best practice recommendations, and those are included in more detail in attachment A of the management letter at the back of your binder. Right. Any questions for Amanda Ri?
Any questions, council? Thank you, Mr. [inaudible].
No questions about the summary report specifically, or the audit process in general? We'd be happy to answer any questions this evening.
I would encourage council and really anybody in the public, if you read nothing else out of this big book, is read the management discussion and analysis. I think it gives you a good summary, if you will, of what's happening and what the numbers are telling us. And certainly, for those that are interested, all of the other detail is there. You know, the notes to the financial statements and all of that are very important to us people that deal with them all the time, but most certainly read that management discussion and analysis.
Yeah. The M D N A and the notes certainly tell the story that you can't always get from just looking at the financial statements themselves. It tells the story behind the numbers. We appreciate the opportunity to perform the audit, as well as to present the results to you all this evening. So, thank you for your time. And I'd like to say, too, that Kelvin and Jessica and their teams were great to work with again this year. So, we look forward to next year's audit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Got to do a great job.
Thank you.
Next, our financial director, Jessica Pile, will give a presentation on major tax revenue collection trends.
All right. So, this month, we are looking at July sales, and net sales and use tax fiscal year-to-date is up over $370,000, or 4.2%. And if you remember, during budgeting, we budgeted a 4% increase, so we're just slightly above that increase that we have budgeted, and that in a dollar figure is a little bit less than $15,000. So, that's fiscal year-to-date, we're above budget around $15,000. We've seen sales tax decrease when compared to last year, and that decrease has been offset mostly by the increase in use tax. So, that's kept us, helped keep us above budget fiscal year-to-date. The franchise taxes, this includes that charter settlement that we received at the beginning of the budget year of almost $378,000. So, that is a big portion of the fiscal year-to-date increase over last year of the $417,000. The additional $40,000 or so is in electricity, and we kind of identified at the last meeting that that increase is very likely due to the high temperatures that we experienced over the summer. Electricity year-to-date is 4.2% higher than the same time last year. Transportation taxes, they're higher fiscal year-to-date, mostly due to an increase in gasoline taxes. So, fiscal year-to-date, the gasoline taxes are 15.3% higher than they were to date last year. We had previously seen vehicle sales that were higher than previous years, but that's flattened out. And then, property tax payments, we'll get a good look at those in December and January when a book of those payments are made. Any question? Thanks.
Thank you, Jessica. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Your Honor. All right. Thank you, Chairman Marshall. Up next, we have public safety. Chairman Robinson, you have the floor.
The fire department is in need of a budget adjustment for vehicles to repair. One of the units broke, had broken leaf springs, leaf springs went through the gas tank, so that requires repair. And then, that same vehicle has the transmission control module that was not functioning, so it wouldn't shift. So, those have been attended to, and we now need an additional 14121 above budget.
Okay. Thank you. And in relation to this, we have a resolution and one ordinance. We'll begin with the resolution. Call for the reading of the resolution.
Resolution 2056. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Sedalia, Missouri, stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase the city's annual budget for fiscal year 2024.
Motion to approve. Second. Any council discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Up next, we have an ordinance. Call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number 2023-182. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2023-2024 regarding fire fleet engine repairs.
Second reading. Second. Any council discussion? Have you heard none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2023-182. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2023-2024 regarding fire fleet engine repairs.
The passage. Second. Any council discussion? Have you heard none? Roll call, please. Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
All in favor. Ordinance pass. Thank you, Jack. Up next, we have Public Works. Chairman Oldham, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, sir. We have three items tonight under Public Works. The first item tonight is a resolution briefing item we do as we need to grant an easement to bountiful investments. They would create a storm water retention basin in the area that they're doing it. Thank you very much, Mr. Shaw. The area that they're doing it will not affect any of the planning or strategic plan that we have with that.
Okay. Call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number 2023-183. An ordinance authorizing an easement agreement for construction and maintenance of a storm water detention basin.
Second reading. Second. Any council discussion? Have you heard none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2023-183. An ordinance authorizing an easement agreement for construction and maintenance of a storm water detention basin.
Final passage. Second. Any council discussion? Have you heard none? Roll call, please. Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
All in favor.
Second item I have tonight is we need to update our city's GIS database. As we add infrastructure, we must also add layers of that information to our GIS system. We are at the point where we need to update those layers, so we need to approve an agreement with survey and mapping LLC to do so.
All right. Call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number 2023-184. An ordinance authorizing a service agreement for GPS locating and inspecting new water distribution, storm sewer, and sanitary sewer assets and updating the city's GIS database.
Second reading. Second. Any council discussion? Have you heard none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2023-184. An ordinance authorizing a service agreement for GPS locating and inspecting new water distribution, storm sewer, and sanitary sewer assets and updating the city's GIS database.
Final passage.
Second.
Any council discussion? Have you heard none? Roll call, please.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
List.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
All in favor.
Final item I have tonight is we're going to budget amendment and the addition of two positions for the Public Works Department. Staff is recommending refueling two new positions in order to reduce time, cost, and increase efficiency. So one of the program, one of the items, positions is a program specialist who will help with such items such as procuring and tracking parts, and ensuring purchasing of orders. The second position is a utility locate position. This position is pretty self-explanatory, but since we contract out most of the surveying and marketing, covering in this in-house, we could save around $100,000 a year.
All right. We have two resolutions and three ordinances in relation to this matter. We'll begin with the first resolution. Call for the reading of the first resolution.
Resolution 2057. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Sedalia, Missouri stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase the city's annual budget for fiscal year 2024.
Motion to approve. Second. Any council discussion regarding the resolution? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Resolution passes. Thank you, council. Now we'll call for the reading of the first ordinance in relation to this matter.
Bill number 2023-185. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2023-2024 regarding addition of program specialist position within vehicle maintenance.
Second reading. Second. Any council discussion? Having heard none? Call, or all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2023-185. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2023-2024 regarding addition of program specialist position within vehicle maintenance.
The final passage. Figure. Please. Any council discussion? Roll call, please.
Foster.
Yes.
List.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
All in favor.
Ordinance passes. All right. Now we have the second resolution in regards to this matter. Call for the reading of the second resolution.
Resolution 2058. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Sedalia, Missouri stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase the city's annual budget for fiscal year 2024.
Motion to approve. Second. Any council discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Resolution passes. All right. Call for the reading of the second ordinance in relation to this matter.
Bill number 2023-186. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2023-2024 regarding addition of utility locate technician.
Second reading. Second. Any council discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2023-186. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2023-2024 regarding addition of utility locate technician.
Final passage. Second. Any council discussion? Roll call, please.
List.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
All in favor.
All right. Ordinance passes. Call for the reading of the third and final ordinance in relation to this matter.
Bill number 2023-187. An ordinance amending ordinance number 9940 by adding new classifications and job descriptions for the positions of program specialist and utility locate technician for the City of Sedalia, Missouri.
Second reading. Second. Any council discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2023-187. An ordinance amending ordinance number 9940 by adding new classifications and job descriptions for the positions of program specialist and utility locate technician for the City of Sedalia, Missouri.
Final passage. Second. Any council discussion? Having heard none? Roll call, please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
List.
Yes.
All in favor.
That's all I have, Your Honor. All right. Thank you, Chairman Oldham. Up next, we have community development. Chairwoman Foster, you have the floor.
Thank you. I have one item this evening, and it is a grant agreement. Community Development Director John Simmons applied for and was awarded a grant through the historic State Historic Preservation Office to develop design guidelines to assist residents with best practices for restoration within historic districts. It should be stressed that these are guidelines, not requirements. However, they would certainly be helpful to those wishing to secure funding for historic preservation. This is a $20,000 grant with the matching requirement of $20,000 cash from $10,000 in time to that time. The granting agency has prepared an agreement outlining the requirements of the grant in that committee's approval.
All right. Call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number 2023-188. An ordinance authorizing a financial assistance agreement for the creation of design guidelines for historic residences.
Second reading.
Second.
Any council discussion regarding the ordinance? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2023-188. An ordinance authorizing a financial assistance agreement for the creation of design guidelines for historic residences.
Final passage. Second. Any council discussion? Have you heard none? Roll call.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
List.
Yes.
All in favor.
All right. Thank you, Chairwoman Foster. Under other business, we have some liquor licenses that need to be renewed.
We have two renewals tonight. Daniela Silva doing business as Morello's Taqueria Bakery and Grocery LLC at 125 East 16 for liquor by the drink and Sunday sales. And Chris Rand doing business as Rudy's Discount Smoke Shop at 3040 West Broadway, Suite 220 for packaged liquor and Sunday sales.
Motion to approve. Second. Any council discussion regarding the renewals? Having heard none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. And now we have miscellaneous items from Mayor, City Council, or City Administrator. You guys got anything you want to talk about?
I've got a couple items. This coming Saturday at great time on Broadway, West Broadway, True Vine Church of God in Christ here in Sedalia will be giving gas away. Line up at 10:00 a.m., done when they're done. Free gas from that church. That is also the church where we renamed part of Monocle Street, Elder Morse. So they're giving free gas the way they wanted to make sure that I let everybody know that. I don't think it's going to last very long, free gas. They'll be there maybe at 9:45. The other thing is that my church, Burns Chapel Freeway Baptist Church, is doing a celebration banquet honoring our pastor, Bishop Paul Jones. He's been with us for several years now, and he is very visible within the community. And that's going to be on Saturday night, the 23rd, at 6:00 p.m. at Burns Chapel Freeway Baptist Church. If you'd like tickets, I have them.
Okay. I just wanted to announce that tomorrow, the 19th, we'll be taking the Dare car to Oak Grove. We were invited up there by the Oak Grove Police Department to help celebrate their kids' night out. It's a pretty big deal we went up there last year. And then off September 30th, Mayor Dawson's going to help me, we're going to have a car down at our park handing out T-shirts and letting the kids sit in the car for the wheels in the park. And this year, they have partnered with the United Way, so it should be a big event. That's from 9:00 to 1:00. So just want to kind of keep everybody updated on what we do with that Dare car. It's getting pretty, we're going with it all the time, so.
Yeah. And any member of the council wants to come out and help with that, feel free to come on out, and we'll put you to work. Car show's this weekend, right?
And then also my car club's car show is this weekend. Be around the square, courthouse. Starts at Monica, we'll try to hand out the tickets in. They do the hard judging, so it takes a little, but I kind of watch that, and when I feel like we got more cars, I think they can get done from noon till, because that's when it's advertised that they're going to start judging at noon, we get them started earlier. So it'd be a good day, Saturday, and busy week for me this week, but you know, we're going to make it through.
Anybody, I'd just like to say that I thought the Latino Festival was well-attended. It was a great event. Lightning, I think, hastened, and a little bit of rain kind of hastened the closure a little soon, but the part that I attended was a great experience. And just to build upon that, I think the, you know, the pavilion has been working out as a great asset. I mean, it's been used several times for things like that. It was perfect for that event, and I saw a lot of people enjoying it. And then also, just a reminder, the last first Thursday for the season will be in October. And then of course, we'll move from there into homecoming and then into the holidays. And just wanted to commend Joey and John. The Sedalia Main Streets is really, really coming together. A lot of good stuff. I see some members here of the committees, but a lot of good stuff going on, and it shows through those events. We don't often take enough time to celebrate, so I just wanted to mention those things.
I just wanted, we participated in that junk-in-the-trunk deal that they had on the first Sunday, and for the first time, I was really pleased to see that there ended up being about 25 vendors up there, people selling stuff. Pretty good selection. If you come down through there, you had a pretty good selection of stuff you could drive. So anyway, I think probably next year, we could maybe make that grow a little more too, so.
And then lastly, thanks for the article in the paper, and then also on the radio there, the quadic facility announcement. It's very exciting stuff. Long time coming, and so finally glad to get that out there and get it moving forward. So thanks, Amy, for all you're doing and putting all that stuff together, so.
Yeah. I'd just like to express my, M M L was great, very municipally. This previous week, we were away at a conference learning. One of the things that, Willing has already inadvertently affected this meeting, I didn't realize I was doing it until I was doing it, and you guys probably noticed it was a little different, was with regards to parliamentary procedure. So one of the things that was stressed with us is having the debate after you've had the motion and the second. Historically, we've done it to where we do, the chairperson introduces the proposed ordinance, and then we have discussion, and I call for the reading of the ordinance. The way they recommended doing that was actually having that discussion after we've had the motion and the second to get that piece of legislation onto the floor. Another thing was with regards to having public comment outside of the public comment portion of the meeting. They stress the point that you needed to have a suspension of the rules, a motion to suspend the rules in order to do that. So something going forward, that's something we're going to introduce. And then another thing, and I've told them, and I haven't talked to Joe about it yet, but they talked about, once I got to talking about it, was on the motion to adjourn, the motion second to adjourn the open meeting, they recommended doing a vote on that. So we will most likely be going forward with that unless Joe protests some of that stuff. But it was a great learning experience, and I mean, I'm sure you guys were the ones that were there to pick up some stuff outside of that, so. Always enjoy those, and I always end up picking up stuff that I didn't think about or, you know, little nuggets, so.
Ideas from other communities, so, yeah, all this stuff. Yeah. It's always kind of re-energizing when we go to those and we get back some new ideas. All right. With that, we'll go ahead and move forward with the good and welfare portion of the meeting. And we will go ahead and open up the floor to the public. Anybody that's got anything they want to address City Council on, step to the podium, state your name and your address, and you've got three minutes.
I'm Chris Paszulitz, 712 West Broadway. And I'm Tim Keel, 1405 East Timberwood Street, Sedalia, Missouri. Good evening, honorable members of the Sedalia City Council. How's everybody doing tonight? Good? Good evening. I'm Tim Keel. As I just said, I stand for you not just as an individual, but as a voice of many concerned citizens and business owners who love our city and want to see it thrive. We are here to talk about something that we all hold dear to historic downtown Sedalia. A place where culture thrives, businesses grow, and where our community comes together. However, there's an issue that we can no longer ignore. Parking congestion are putting a strain on this treasured part of our city. That is why we are here, representing a petition with signatures from the community urging the esteemed council to consider the implementation of one-way streets coupled with diagonal parking in downtown Sedalia. So why should we do this? Firstly, one-way streets will improve our traffic flow. Imagine downtown where cars move smoothly, unburdened by confusing intersections and congested streets. A streamlined flow of traffic doesn't just save time, it enhances the quality of life for our residents and visitors. Secondly, diagonal parking can significantly increase our parking capacity. Space is a premium resource in our bustling downtown. By optimizing how we use this space, we are not just accommodating more cars, we are inviting more people to participate in downtown life. More people mean more business, and more business means a thriving community. Thirdly, let's talk about safety. Our proposal will make our streets safer for pedestrians. Simplified traffic patterns at intersections will mean fewer conflict points, less confusion, and ultimately a safer environment to walk, shop, and enjoy our downtown. And finally, let's not forget economic revitalization. An accessible downtown, preserving the historic charm that makes downtown Sedalia so special. Our proposal offers a modern solution that respects and maintains our heritage. We ask that you take our proposal seriously. We ask for the initiation of feasibility studies, consultations with experts, and most importantly, a conversation with the community. This is not just a decision, it's an investment in the future of Sedalia. Thank you for your attention and consideration. We are committed to working collaboratively to make downtown Sedalia an emblem of both our historic past and our promising future. I have a petition here that has been prepared and signed by 115 residents that I would like entered into the record. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. I'm trying to go take that petition for you and get that to court.
I would like to, can we make a motion to continue this discussion at the next council meeting and instruct staff to contact city areas to do a feasibility study?
Motion on the floor, go to the second.
Second.
Any council discussion regarding the motion, the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. We'll pick it up in the next meeting. Is there anyone else who'd like to address council?[1596.83]